Good evening. I call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for November 25, 2024. With Thanksgiving this week, I hope you all get to swap "I'm Too Busy's" for "I'm Too Full." On behalf of the school board, we want to express our heartfelt gratitude to our incredible YCSD families, students, teachers, and staff. We are thankful for each of you. I would like to share the YCSD mission statement. The mission of York County School Division is to ensure every student is valued, supported, and challenged through learning experiences which prepare them for a successful future. If you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Now, I will share some information about our pledge leader, Kimberly Mensah, a third grade, excuse me, a third grader at Waller Mill Elementary School. For this month's Pledge of Allegiance, it's my honor to introduce Kimberly Mensah, a hardworking and caring student in Ms. Britt's third grade classroom at Waller Mill Elementary School. Kimberly is a student who brings positivity to each classroom she enters. Each morning, she greets nearly everyone in her path with a smile and a hug. Kimberly helps her teachers, supports her friends, and gives her best effort in everything that she does. Over the past few years, Waller Mill has loved watching her learn, grow, and develop her self-confidence. When Waller Mill asked Kimberly to serve as this month's pledge leader, she said she was incredibly excited because she loves America. We asked her to explain what this country meant to her, and Kimberly shared, "I love this country because I was born in it. I have freedom, and I have lots of friends in America." In school, Kimberly's favorite parts of the day are recess, resource, and lunch. She loves sleeping in late, eating peanut butter and jelly or macaroni and cheese, and playing Roblox in her spare time. When Kimberly grows up, she hopes to be a teacher because all of her teachers at Waller Mill have been very kind. She wants to be kind to her students, too. Please join me in congratulating and welcoming Kimberly Mensah, a fine example of the best Waller Mill and York County School Division have to offer as she leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as Kimberly leads our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic's prolific stand, one nation, unuttered God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, tonight, you may have noticed, we have a lot of ladies here with some black t-shirts on that say "I Love TAB Field Hockey." So, we are going to take a moment this evening, and we want to recognize our state champions. If Ms. Lugo and Ms. Wendy Wilson will come up front. A huge congratulation to the TAB field hockey team for an outstanding season. With an incredible 90-0 record over the past four years, this team has dominated on the field. The team has achieved remarkable feats, including four consecutive state championships, 12 total for the school, and an unbroken winning streak since the 2020-2021 school year. They've outscored opponents 537 to 20, and recently set new VHSL records, a 68-game consecutive winning streak, breaking both the VHSL streak for field hockey and for all sports with an impressive 85-game streak. Their points-per-game average of 7.09 surpassed the previous record set by TAB's own 2019. Special recognition goes to Coach Wilson, who reached her 400th career win this season, placing her second in the state among active coaches. With a career record of 403 to 31, her leadership has been instrumental in this historic achievement. Congratulations to the entire team and coaching staff. Go Tigers! Dr. Shandor, do you would like to say a few words?
Absolutely. Well, I'll let other board members go ahead. You could share first.
Just want to say congratulations on such a great achievement to your coach and to all of your team, students. It's such an honor to have you guys and represent us on a state level in achieving this amazing accomplishment for all of us. Thank you.
And I'd just like to say, add my congratulations to it because you've done something no one else has ever done, and I look forward to the dynasty continuing. And, no pressure, of course, you know, but it's just awesome. I mean, when I saw your girls down there with the rings, I mean, that's really neat. That's cool. Great job. Super accomplishment.
So, what's the first place, Coach? What number of wins? You're at 4 or 3?
What's the, I'm sorry?
You're at 4 or 3 wins? Like, what's the number one place?
My favorite win?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. The chancellor, Coach, James Larkin.
And he has how many wins?
Hmm, I'm not sure. I don't know off the top of my head. Sorry.
Again, we had a chance to talk to the young ladies downstairs, and being a TAB dad, as I shared, it is really wonderful to see these ladies and all they've accomplished. We're really proud of them. There's nothing like hoisting a state banner in your gymnasium, and I know that Ms. Lugo is really proud of these ladies, and I know David Powell, the athletic director, is really proud of both of his coaches and all of these players. And we talked downstairs about how hard it is to manage, you know, being a high school athlete, student athlete, you know, the discipline that it takes, the hard work, the time management, collaboration, and working together. I know Coach Wilson talked downstairs about how important it is for the girls and really any team to work well together, and they've surely made us proud in New York County School Division. I'm super proud of them and really proud of Coach Wilson. I mean, 11 state championships, 11. That's pretty awesome. Let's give her a big round of applause. So, I know Ms. Lugo was going to share the secret sauce. Ms. Lugo?
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mrs. Goodwin, and board. Thank you for inviting us here this evening. While I don't have the secret sauce, I do know that the two ladies standing behind me, Coach Wendy Wilson and Coach Lindsay Olson, have done amazing things with the leadership. They're not only leaders on the field, they're not only leaders with this team to the right of me, but they are leaders in our school, both instructionally and athletically. So, that is the secret, what Coach Wilson said earlier about everyone being able to work together, everyone being able to respect each other, everyone being willing to admit when something is done that's not absolutely correct, and you make a mistake, you work together to overcome it, and then you put it all to the side when you get on the field. And I think there's some life lessons in there for all of us, and you see the picture behind you. 2024, field hockey state champions because of all that, not just their athletic ability, but every one of these ladies, they are leaders in our building, and they work together even through the hard stuff, and I think that's what's important, what makes our team stand out. So, I just want to say a heartfelt thank you to both of the ladies behind me, and thank you for having us here this evening. So, now, I'm going to turn it over to Coach Wilson.
Okay, so, first of all, thank you guys so much, Dr. Shandor, Mrs. Goodwin, all the board members. This was truly an amazing experience for myself and Coach Olson and the team. Just to be celebrated this way, it just really makes us feel, I don't know, amazing. This was obviously a really hard-working group that we had here, and not only this group, but the previous groups that have all combined for this 90 wins. They just never want to, they never want to give up. They continue to work hard every day. Doesn't matter, you know, what drill we ask them to do, what run we ask them to do, they come out every day giving their all, and I'm blessed as a coach to have such amazing young ladies to work with every day, and the support not only from their families, who have all bought into the TAB field hockey family, but our school, and Ms. Lugo, and our administration, and the school board as well. Just, you know, it's a whole community here, and we really feel that, and so, we're really genuinely appreciative for everything you've done here. Also, Coach Olson is my main girl over here, and I definitely couldn't have done it without her, and just really blessed to have such an amazing community and support behind us. So, thank you very much.
We're going to take a short break at this time so that we can take pictures with the team and their families, so if Ms. Lugo and the coach just want to come up. When your name is announced, please stand along with your family member while we hear about your accomplishments. The first school is Bruton High School, and Mr. Schaefer is going to tell us about his senior of the month.
Yes. Go ahead and stand up, guys. This is Aya Ali, okay? And yeah, go ahead and have everyone up. There you go. And she is, I guess you'd call it, a second-generation senior of the month because her sister got it last year. So, they're keeping it in the family. Aya is an integral part of Bruton School community. Her role as class treasurer for three years reflects her leadership and her peers' trust in her abilities, but it is on a stage where Aya truly shines. As a key member of our school's theater program and a student of the York County School Magnet's Program, the School of the Arts, Aya has captivated audiences with her performances. Her portrayal of Regina George in the musical Mean Girls was utterly dynamic, showcasing her ability to bring characters to life with authenticity and flair. Aya's talents extends beyond acting. She's a terrific singer who often lends her voice to school and community events, singing the National Anthem with grace and pride. Her performances are more than just displays of skill, they are acts of unity, bringing people together and creating a culture of kindness and inclusivity. Congratulations, Aya.
Our Grafton High School senior of the month is Kelsey Hurst, but Kelsey's unable to join us this evening. She's, excuse me, she's participating in a Powderpuff football game. She'll join us for our December 9 meeting and be recognized then. So, at this time, we will move to TAB High School, where Mr. Pyavich will fill us in on his senior of the month.
So, I'd like to invite Lucy and her parents, Bruce and Heidi, stand up. Thank you very much. Lucy, me and you will go back together through the Government School of Science and CTE committees. I appreciate you being here. So nice to see you. But let me tell you a little bit about Lucy. We are proud to select Lucy Cox as a TAB senior of the month for November. Lucy is extraordinary and sets herself apart from others by being a motivated, brilliant, and compassionate student. While contributing to our school community in remarkable ways, Lucy remains humble and kind to everyone she encounters. She's a trustworthy and reliable and goes out of her way to help others even when it seems as tough she could possibly have additional time to spare. Most recently, she attended the National Blue Ribbon Ceremony at the Battleman Elementary and served as a drone pilot for a school picture commemorating the event. Very, very nice man. Good job. So, yes, all of that kids looking for drones. So, Lucy is a Government School of Science and Technology student while being in the top of her class. She works diligently to support others while also being a leader in our school. She is the president of Mu Alpha Theta, the Men Honor Society, while also belonging to five other honor societies. She is also in the Robotics Club and Government School of Advisory Board. Along with her clubs, honor societies, and academics, Lucy also spends time volunteering at the Norfolk Botanical Gardens, giving tours and answering questions from visitors. She has participated in open house events at NASA as well. TAB High School and the community are better because of Lucy and her contributions. Following college, she aspires to be an electrical engineer or pilot with the US military. Congratulations, Lucy. Thank you.
And I have the honor of introducing you to York High's senior of the month. If Elijah James and his family would stand. York High is pleased to recognize Elijah James as our senior of the month. Elijah is a standout student at York High School whose kindness and genuine nature have earned him admiration from faculty and peers alike. As a leader on both the football and basketball teams, EJ embodies sportsmanship and teamwork, inspiring his teammates with his dedication and positive attitude. Beyond athletics, EJ excels in his role as Executive Secretary of Student Council Association, where his organizational skills and proactive approach have enriched student engagement and school spirit. His approachable demeanor and unwavering support for others make him a role model and friend to all. Whether organizing fundraisers, volunteering at school events, or lending a hand with school projects, his readiness to exist exemplifies his selfishness, or, excuse me, selflessness, not selfishness. York High School is proud to honor Elijah James as our senior of the month, a testament to his outstanding leadership, compassion, and commitment to making our school a better place for everyone. Congratulations. Okay. All right. Next, we will go through our student service awards and volunteer awards. Dr. Shandor, would you go down to the front, please? We will now be combining our award recipients according to their school, so I will ask Ms. Krista Brownlee, Waller Mill Elementary Principal, to step forward and remain up front while information is shared about both student service award recipient and the volunteer of the month for Waller Mill Elementary. First, we have our student service award recipient, Charlie Mills. Mr. Schaefer, would you please tell us about Charlie as she comes up front?
I'd be happy to. We're proud to recognize Charlie Mills as York County School Division's Student Service Award winner for the month of November. Charlie, a fifth-grade student, fifth-grader at Waller Mill Elementary School exemplifies leadership, dedication, and a heart for service. As a community service chair for student council, Charlie has taken an active role in making her school a better place. She has sold merchandise, set up, and cleaned up after the spring school dance, demonstrating her commitment to support her peers. Additionally, Charlie has collaborated with peers to write cards for veterans traveling to the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC. Reflecting on the act, she said, "It's important because veterans protect our country, and that's very good." In her leadership role as the SCA Community Service Chair, Charlie has ambitious plans to beautify Waller Mill's landscaping, enhance the outdoor classroom, organize a canned food drive, and collect supplies for shelter animals. These goals show her remarkable vision for community involvement, inspiring those around her to contribute to positive change. Outside of school, Charlie enjoys reading mystery and fantasy books, spending time with her sister and friends, riding her bike, and competing with the 757 swim team. Charlie's enthusiasm for learning and her passion for service shine through in everything she does. Her teacher, Ms. Brandon, describes her as a kind, caring, and responsible student who is deeply involved in our school community. Charlie's dream of becoming a teacher one day reflects her desire to help others and make a lasting impact. Congratulations to Charlie Mills on this well-deserved honor. She is truly a role model for her classmates and a shining example of student service in New York County School Division.
Now, we will have our volunteer of the month for Waller Mill Elementary, Ms. April Shraggy. Ms. Shraggy, can you please join Dr. Shandor and Ms. Brownlee up front? Mr. Schaefer, would you tell us about Ms. Shraggy?
Yes. It is my honor to introduce Mrs. April Shraggy, an incredible asset to Waller Mill Elementary School, who has been selected as the York County School Board's Volunteer of the Month for November. Waller Mill recognizes Mrs. Shraggy for her unwavering dedication to our students and staff this past year. Typically, it takes time for new family members to learn the routines of a new school and to find ways to get involved, but last year, when Mrs. Shraggy enrolled her daughter Leila at Waller Mill, she got right to work. Within days, our shining stars felt the impact of one of the most committed volunteers with whom we have ever had the joy of working. At every school event last year, we could count on Mrs. Shraggy as one of the first family members to sign up to help donate supplies and find extra ways to provide support. From dances to field day to help around the office, Mrs. Shraggy has truly made Waller Mill a better place to be. She even knew when staff had endured a tough week and would arrive with some pizza or treats as a much-needed pick-me-up. Yeah. When we thought there was not any more that she could do, she so surpassed our expectations and joined York County as a substitute teacher. Although we do not get to see Mrs. Shraggy much this year with her daughter now in sixth grade at Queens Lake Middle School, our team still remembers all the amazing ways she supported us last school year. Fred Rogers, or Mr. Rogers, of Mr. Rogers' fame, once said, "We live in a world in which we need to share responsibility. It's easy to say, 'It's not my child, not my community, not my world, not my problem.' Then there are those who see the need and respond. I consider those people my heroes." Mrs. April Shraggy answers that call, and today, we celebrate and honor her for being a hero to the students and staff at Waller Mill Elementary School. Congratulations.
Now, I will ask Mr. Brian Fries, York Middle School Principal, to step forward and remain up front while information is shared for both the student service award recipient and the volunteer of the month for York Middle School. The student service award recipient for this month for York Middle School is Grayson Carpenter. I will share about, come on up, I'll share about Grayson as she comes up. York Middle School is proud to recognize Grayson Carpenter as our student service award winner for the 2024-2025 school year. Grayson is a kind, caring, hard-working student who makes a positive impact on students and every staff, and every, excuse me, and staff every day at York Middle School. Grayson is heavily involved in multiple facets of YMS life. She's a member of our Student Council Association and our Student Virginia Tiered Systems of Support, VTSS, team. In these roles, she serves as a student leader and sacrifices her time to help plan activities and events for her fellow students to enjoy. Grayson's positive attitude is contagious and contributes to the positive culture of YMS. Outside of school, Grayson participated in hurricane relief trips to Virginia and North Carolina with her family to help communities impacted by Hurricane Helene. Grayson and her family coordinated with multiple community partners to assist. This act of selfless service is indicative of the compassion Grayson shows to others, whether they are her longtime friends or total strangers. Please join us in congratulating Grayson as the YMS Student Service Award winner. The volunteer of the month for York Middle School is Ms. Linda Hutchinson. Ms. Hutchinson is also accompanied by her therapy dog. Come on down. This is River. River helps support students at York Middle School. Yorktown Middle School is honored to recognize Linda Hutchinson and therapy dog River as our volunteer of the year for 2024-2025. The YMS team first met Ms. Hutchinson and River at a back-to-school event in the community three years ago. They have a passion for service and helping others. Over the past two years, we have been able to welcome this dynamic duo into our building to support students and staff. Ms. Hutchinson and River volunteer their time every two weeks, and there's a sense of excitement in the building as soon as they arrive. A former teacher, Ms. Hutchinson is a calming presence, a great listener, and connects with our students extremely well. In the words of one of our students who has visited Ms. Hutchinson and River, "They are open to listening to students, and I really enjoy their company." Ms. Hutchinson has been instrumental in connecting our school counseling team with other therapy dog teams to help support at YMS. Ms. Hutchinson and River volunteer in many other capacities in the community as well, and we are incredibly grateful that they are part of our extended Falcon family. I will now ask Ms. Tiana Anthony to come up front while we announce Grafton Middle School Student Service Award winner for the month of October, Zoe Anthony. Zoe was unable to attend last month's meeting, so we are very happy she could be here this evening to be recognized. Zoe, come up to the front while Mr. Pyavich tells about you.
Zoe Anthony, an eighth-grade student at Grafton Middle School, is being recognized for her outstanding dedication and service to the school. Since sixth grade, Zoe, along with her classmate Ashlyn, I believe she was the last month, also student recipient, yeah, awesome, has taken on the important responsibility of raising and lowering both the school and state flags each day. Zoe finds pride in this role, saying it is the least she can do for her country and state. In addition to her flag duties, Zoe is committed Clipper Ambassador, where she helps new students feel comfortable and welcomed at the school. Outside of class, she spends her afternoons volunteering, decorating for counseling, and assisting teachers. Zoe's commitment to service sets an example for her peers, and we are proud to recognize her contribution to Grafton Middle School. Congratulations, Aya.
Okay, we will now have the York Foundation for Public Education presentation. Mr. Schaefer, I'll let you tell about that.
I'd like to invite Mr. Joe Donatelli, York Foundation for Public Education member, to step forward and assist Dr. Shandor as he presents gifts to each of our award recipients. Please come up front when you hear your name called. Congratulations to Kimberly Mensah, a third-grade grader from Waller Mill Elementary School, for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. We'd also like to recognize tonight's student service award recipients, Charlie Mills from Waller Mill Elementary School, Grayson Carpenter from York Middle School, and Zoe Anthony from Grafton Middle School. We also congratulate our seniors of the month, Aya Ali from Bruton High School, Kelsey Hurst from Grafton High School will be with us next month, and Lucy Cox from TAB High School, and Elijah James from York High School. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with their donor, Jean Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being donated by a foundation supporter. Join me in congratulating all of our award recipients. Great job.
Y'all gotta keep smiling. Is everybody done? Okay. We've got one.
Congratulations. Yes. Thanks, y'all.
At this time, we're going to have our Accent on Academics, and Dr. Shandor's going to tell us a little bit about that.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. This month's Accent on Academics focuses on dual enrollment. YCSD offers a variety of dual enrollment opportunities which allow eligible students to take a course that earns both high school credit as well as college credit. Ms. Jessica Harless, coordinator of online learning, will provide an overview of dual enrollment courses in the enrollment courses in York County. Ms. Harless.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Dual enrollment is a program that allows high school students to take college courses and earn both high school and college credit simultaneously. This initiative offers students an early, supported introduction to the rigor and expectations of college coursework. Dual enrollment not only builds critical academic skills, but helps students gain confidence in their ability to find success after high school. Through dual enrollment, students get a head start on their continuing education, reducing the time and cost required to complete a college degree or workforce certification. York County offers students various dual enrollment options through a collaboration with Virginia Peninsula Community College. This slide outlines the various dual enrollment pathways eligible students can pursue. We offer several individual dual enrollment courses that are approved in our program of studies and are available to students in our schools or through special programs supported by YCSD. These courses are generally transferable to most public and many private institutions of higher education in the state of Virginia. Students can also elect to complete the requirements of the Virginia Passport. The Passport is a set of courses totaling 16 credit hours that satisfy general education requirements in most college degree programs. We also have the Early College Program, which allows selected eligible YCSD seniors to complete dual enrollment English 12, along with their remaining required high school coursework virtually during the fall semester of their senior year, and then return to attend VPCC full-time during the spring semester prior to graduation. These students can complete up to 20 college credits during their senior year. Ambitious students seeking to complete between 30 and 31 college credits can earn and work towards the Uniform Certificate of General Studies, or the UCGS. Finally, students have the ability to pursue an associate degree through VPCC simultaneously with their high school diploma. This rigorous pathway that requires, that does require early planning boasts an incredible 60 college credits, usually requiring two full years of college study. YCSD began offering dual enrollment courses to our students during the 2020 school year. The first dual enrollment course provided by YCSD teachers was English 12. This course allows students to earn six college credits while completing their high school English requirements. Since then, we've expanded to offer six additional dual enrollment courses, allowing students to acquire even more college credit before graduating from high school. We are continuing to work to add even more dual enrollment opportunities to support students who want to pursue one of the dual enrollment pathways. The courses listed here are facilitated within our schools. However, other DE courses are available through programs that YCSD collaborates with, like New Horizons Regional Education Center. Now, you'll hear from several students who will share their individual dual enrollment experiences. Please welcome our first student, Samantha Beatley.
Hello, my name is Samantha Beatley. I'm a junior at Grafton High School, and I'm currently enrolled in Dual Enrollment History, which will give me six VPCC credits by the end of this year, and I am taking the Unmanned Aircraft Systems Program at New Horizons, which will give me 18 VPCC credits by the end of the year. The reason I took these classes is because I want to be a pilot when I grow up, and getting into the industry as soon as possible is very important to me, so taking these classes will hopefully lighten the load in college and, yeah. In my New Horizons program right now, we are working towards our Part 107 certification, which will allow me to fly drones for compensation, which will be really useful in jobs before college and things like that. I heard about these programs through my counselor, and now you will hear from Abigail.
Hello, I'm Abigail Sheldon. I am a junior at Bruton High School, and I'm currently enrolled in the Dual Enrollment U.S. History class. I decided to take this class because I thought it was a good opportunity to gain college credits while still in high school and be able to kind of kickstart my undergraduate and hopefully move on towards things more interested in my career, because I am working towards, hopefully, either being a veterinarian or pediatrician, so I do want to clear up room in my undergraduate to be able to take more science-based classes, so I thought this was a good way to be able to do that while also getting six transferable college credits, so, yeah. I heard about this through my counselor, and we discussed it for a little bit and decided that this would be a good fit for what I did want to do and like how we planned out my schedules for the years coming up, so, yeah, all right. I didn't have anything fun like drones in my speech, I'm sorry. All right, that'll be all for me, though, and you're going to hear from Ian and Austin
Hello, I'm Ian, and this is my brother Austin. We are seniors at York High School and the Governor's School for Science and Technology. We've been academic students for our whole lives, and we've taken all the dual enrollment courses available at our home school, at York High School, but we're more interested in the STEM course, which is where the Governor's School comes in. It allows us to take dual enrollment courses that are college courses that are more STEM-based for math and science. I'm currently enrolled in multi-variable calculus and college biology, which is really fun. I'm taking, I get to do labs and this and that in biology, really fun, which is the course that I, the major I would like to go into in college at hopefully UVA. And hopefully, these credits will help me on my path, or at least give me proper experience ahead of time.
I'm Austin, and I'm taking, I'm in the computational sciences strand at Governor's School. I am a really big math person and a big computer science person, so I really wanted to do, and again, very academic, so I kind of wanted to do as much as I can before college to just get as much under my belt as I can. And for the Governor's School, that's really nice, because the furthest you can get really in, just like with normal high school classes, at least at York, is for math is around Calculus II, and in the Governor's School, you can get up to Calculus III and Linear Algebra, which is really cool. And on top of that, I am learning C++ , which is a coding language that isn't taught at the homeschool, because the classes there, they focus on like Java and things, which I'm also taking, so I'm able to get a lot of different coding languages under my belt in the same amount of time that I normally wouldn't be able to do that without Governor's School.
So, we heard about these courses from our counselors back, I think in middle school, where they told us about the path we would need to take for it, because we've always been wanting to do as much as we can academically, and that's what brought us to where we are now. So, I would like to turn it over to Hamilton.
Hello, my name is Hamilton Coffey. I'm currently a senior at TAB High School, and I'm currently enrolled in the National Registered EMS Program through Governor's Health Science at VPCC. Last year, I was looking at my options after taking the fire science course, and my counselor at TAB High School helped me find out about the dual enrollment program at VPCC. The program gives me stepping stones towards my career goal, which will hopefully be firefighter slash rescue technician in the future. And being a current volunteer at PCOSN, this class helps me actually go on like medic calls on the ambulance and stuff, so since I'm an active student in an EMS program, I can actually go do real hands-on stuff, which is really fun. At VPCC, we do stuff like labs, like there's a lab that emulates ambulance, like a perfect replica of an ambulance, so we can go in there and do call stuff. And there's another lab that emulates like common apartment settings, where like we can go in and actually put our hands on like, like mock patients and do like real phone calls and stuff. I was really glad to take the VPCC course, and I'm really excited about the stepping stones that it's going to push me towards my career. And I will now turn it over to Ms. Harless to finish up our presentation.
Students, thank you so much for sharing your thoughts and experiences on dual enrollment tonight. We can now take any questions that the board has for our students or our team regarding
So, my question, I guess, would be to anyone who wants to answer it, is that, so dual enrollment, is, what made that better than, than like taking AP History or something like that?
It's more grade-based on like your semester grades, so if you keep those up, you get the college credits either way versus taking an AP exam, which, depending on what score you get, depends on how many you get, but we can get all six, or depending on what class we have, like full credit for the entire class just by getting good grades, so.
There's a, one thing that I didn't have opportunity when I was going for my college degree, actually, was I did not have a high school finished here, I was out of the country, so I had to retake some of the courses that I'd done back in my home country, and looking at you guys having that path and actually knowledge and will to do this right now, to lighten or actually expand your horizons later on in college, is just, it's amazing to me. And like, you know, through York County Schools, which you're saying for the last four years that we have this opportunity, I'm just looking forward to have more students enroll in this, because I believe it's an amazing head start, being comfortable in the environment that you are with a high, within a high school, because colleges are different, and you guys will learn that, but it's, this is really, really good, and I appreciate you guys putting this program and maintaining it, so congratulations.
So, my question is for any one of you, maybe, maybe what advice would you give to other students who might be thinking about this, but they hear college, dual enrollment, and it's like, oh, you know, that's a lot of work, you know, how, how do you help, how can we help? What would be your advice to them as far as doing this? And, because it can be, you know, you hear dual enrollment college, you know, and like, that's a little intimidating, but obviously, it's very good, it's got a lot of great benefits, so what do you think?
I think it helps that the teachers are still at high school and not, it's not like you're going to the actual college, so it kind of helps integrate you sooner, and most of the teachers are still high school teachers, so they treat you like a college kid in a way, but also understand that you're still in high school, so.
Okay.
Hamilton also wanted to, for people thinking about like after-high-school stuff, like definitely, in my case, like when going into firefighting and stuff, and you don't typically hear about people going for like a major college degree for stuff like that, but when it comes to dual enrollment, it definitely helps to go and get like your EMS training, your fire training, so you could do more like blue-collar jobs and not like all the super smart people stuff.
Hey, those jobs are important, don't underestimate.
So, I have a question, actually, I made a statement, but not a question. What advice can you give to your fellow students that are coming up and hearing about dual enrollment? What would be the first step for them to take towards this?
Just try your best and do all your work, because like, that's the biggest thing with this, like if you just stay on it and you keep doing what the, like, just do the stuff you're given and keep your grades up, and you will get college credits, and that is very, very good, so just try your best, have fun with it, ask the teacher, because they're there, to answer questions, you're not in a big lecture hall, like you can raise your hand and be like, um, so, about the American Revolution, like, you know, it's a whole thing, so just be comfortable asking questions and like asking for help, and just, again, try your best, and you can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, it's a great program, thank you.
All right, at this time, we are going to take a short recess, so we can just congratulate our award recipients and families, and then we'll be back. All right, welcome. We have two opportunities to speak this evening. The first is for general. Oh, I am so sorry, I surely did. I did. I apologize, a little discombobulated tonight. We have two topics for discussion under unfinished business this evening. The topics were tabled at the November 18th work session. I would like to make a motion that we move these items to unfinished business, table them to unfinished business for the next meeting work session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Both, yes. Sorry, yes, both A and B. Okay, a motion was made by Mrs. Goodwin and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to table the unfinished business for the Freedom of Information Act. Oh, and the board rules and responsibilities until the December meeting, December 9th Mr. Pyovich?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passes three to zero.
All right, now we're going to just move into some committee updates from our board members. All, all the three board members here tonight will give just an overview of the committees that they're a part of, and I'll start with Mr. Schaefer.
Well, mine was pretty easy, because I didn't get to go to the YFPE meeting last week, and, and I'll be getting with Bonnie for some, for some minutes and everything on that, but it's an exciting time for YFPE now, because it's, it's getting into time when we have Teacher of the Year coming, and we have grants and everything else, so it's a very busy time, and it's a very energetic time, I guess you could say, when, when a prize patrol comes around and all, so I'm looking forward to that.
Next, we'll have Mr. Pyovich.
Did not have much of the, to update, but for the New Horizons meeting, I missed it because we had a joint meeting with the supervisors last month. Part of my committee responsibilities on New Horizons is that I submitted an audit questionnaire for the fraud to ARAM and Smith Company, and also participated for the CTE mock interviews at Grafton High School, so I'll have more for next time.
And I had, I am part of the Gifted Education Advisory Committee. We met on September 24th, and we had a full house. The committee is well-represented. We reviewed the local plan for gifted education for 2023 to 2027, and for the 2023-2024 school year, there were 416 gifted referrals that resulted in 163 students identified for gifted education. This number's down slightly from the previous year in the number of referrals that we normally see, and the committee discussed, obviously, we'd like to see more referrals this upcoming school year. The committee noted that a shortage of gifted teachers still persists and falls below the number recommended by the Virginia Department of Education Standards of Quality, but the vision, the division is making strides to kind of close that gap. An additional position was opened up this school year, bringing the total number of gifted teaching positions to seven, and if we continue to add a new gifted teaching position each year, we can eventually meet that VDOESOQ and achieve the goals laid out in the local plan for the gifted. GAC is also using its Talent Development Program to promote more representation of other racial groups. What talent development does is it provides kind of whole-class enrichment prior to the first-grade screening, followed by targeted group sessions developed as a result of the screening, so that way, we can kind of look and make sure we're not missing anybody as we look for that talent. We did have another meeting towards the middle of November. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend due to a family emergency, and what we had was a presentation by our, excuse me, regarding college application and applying for college by our, the head of our counseling department, the woman who sees, oversees over all our school counselors. So, our next GAC meeting will be in February, and I'll have more to report to you at that All right, next, we'll have Dr. Shandor give us some pay plan updates.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Goodwin. I'm going to have Dr. David Wright, our Chief Human Resource Officer, come to the podium and give you a brief update related to the pay plan.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Madam Chair, members of the board, I have three pay plan updates to bring to you this evening. The first one is our food services. We have currently, right now, in our pay plan, the food service managers receive a bonus, and we have not used this bonus payment since we have outsourced our food services, so we'd like to take that out of our pay plan. The second one is to add students, to the student services, a substitute section for our school social workers, and we would like to add that to our pay plan for a substitute school social worker at $30.50 an hour. And currently, right now, YCSD And currently, right now, YCSD promoted one of our social workers to the lead social worker position. So we have a current position that's open. So we need a substitute until we fill that position. And we also have a work as needed position within our pay plan, which is our cafeteria monitors, our interns, temporary office workers and crossing guards. And based off of the Virginia State Minimum Wage Requirement, YCSD will increase those rates from 1225 to 1250. And that is in anticipation for the January 25 state minimum wage law increase. And also, I just wanted to put in a real quick plug. For December 11th, we are doing a joint pop-up job fair and we are partnering with the county with this. So it is going to be December 11th from 4:00 to 6:00 at the York Pecosin Sheriff's Office on Goodwin Neck Road. We are joining together with the county and we are looking, of course, for teachers, paraeducators, custodians, maintenance and transportation on our side. And then candidates can also come in if they would like consideration for deputy sheriff, public works, firefighters and dispatchers. So if you have an opportunity to stop by, we'd love to see you there. Do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wrights.
All right. At this time, we have two opportunities to speak this evening. The first is for general topics and the second is a forum specifically relating to the comments regarding the capital improvements program and operating budget. Before I open for public comments, I will share some remarks. The school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on the topics germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling civility and respect for our students. We ask that speakers direct their comments to the school board as a whole and not to one individual. Speakers will present their comments at the podium. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. A timer is visible to speakers from the podium and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The timer will begin after you state your name and district. If a concern is brought to the board's attention, a staff member will reach out to you to follow up. I now open the public comment for citizens. All right. Our first speaker tonight is Pam Pouchot.
Good evening. My name is Pam Pouchot. I reside in District Four. The incoming president-elect has chosen Linda McMahon, CEO of the World Wrestling Federation, to serve as Secretary of Education. Her experience in education is that she served one year on the Connecticut Board of Education and was removed after lying about having a degree in education. A lawsuit filed on October 24th, excuse me, October 2024, alleges that she and other WWF executives knowingly allowed a ringside announcer to groom and sexually abuse boys as young as 12. It is evident that morals and character are not required for this position. However, a more than $6 million campaign donation can work wonders to look the other way. Her first goal is to demolish the Board of Education. This is the Department of Education. This is only within the purview of Congress, but she can do a lot of damage. Title IX, which defines protections for LGBTQ plus students, is in danger of being unfunded. Services for disabled students are at risk as are students' civil rights protections. She wants to require school divisions to issue school vouchers, which would reduce funding to the public schools. Private schools do not have to accept any student who does not meet their standards. On the peninsula, there is only one private school that is secular, Hampton Roads Academy, and would still cost thousands more even with voucher funds. The well-to-do pay less tuition out of pocket and those without money still can't afford it. Other goals are to instill Christianity into the curriculum, ban books, rewrite history, deny proven science, ensure children of illegal immigrants are turned over to ICE, discriminate against those who are considered different, and the list goes on and on. 52% of York County voters chose Trump, even though he lost in Virginia. So there are a lot of county folks who say this is all acceptable, at least until it affects their children or there is a higher tax rate to pay for vouchers and the loss of federal funds. With all that said, I truly hope this board will serve all students equally, not impose one-sided religious beliefs on all, teach even uncomfortable subjects in a truthful manner and do not allow any parent to decide what children, other than their own, can read or be taught. Loyalty is a two-way street of mutual respect. Fealty is based on power and ends the moment that the one who commands it no longer has a grip on the one who is shackled by it. Trump prefers fealty. On January 20th, 25, America needs to change the Pledge of Allegiance to a more honest and appropriate version. I pledge allegiance to the cult of President Donald J. Trump and to the dictatorship for which he stands, one man who is our God, with liberty and justice for those alone who pledge undying fealty. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Mary Lassiter.
Good evening, Mary Lassiter. And I live in Williamsburg in York County Division. I'm going to read from part of my brother Carl Lassiter's letter. And I'm also going to reference a few, a couple of things that were stated in an article that was written in 2021. What's in a Name: Community Torn Over Magruder Elementary School's Namesake. The name of a school has a large impact on students, shaping pride, belief and how they, how they feel represented. Keep in mind, the history of all Americans is not represented. What kind of message does that send to young, to young students? I'm sorry, didn't bring my glasses tonight. Newport News School Division renamed its Magruder Elementary School to Discovery STEM Academy. That was done in 2016. York County is really far behind on getting rid of Confederate schools named after Confederate generals. York, in that same article, it states that York County School Division has always named schools after a part of a, of a region or location that they're in. And it states that Magruder Elementary School was a whopping 3.6 miles from Camp Perry. That school was built in the Penniman Road area in the Bruton District and in East Williamsburg. They did not have to go a whopping 3.6 miles to select a name for that particular school. There were more suitable schools. And not only that, York County had had Magruder as one of their school names ever since 1920. So that was a, a practice that they had. Now, from my brother's letter, it says, "Today, I pray that York County School Board stop hiding behind the lost cause fiction that Magruder Elementary School was not named in honor of Confederate General J.B. Magruder, but was named in honor of a mostly black region called Magruder, which was named in honor of the same Confederate general mentioned above. It takes a severe case of collective cognitive dissonance to rationalize that the school is not named in commemoration of the Confederate general. Note that near the end of the 19th century and the turn of the 20th century, Virginia and other former Confederate states began to memorialize Confederate veterans who were dying off. During this period, organizations such as the United Daughters of the Confederacy sought to maintain the myth of the lost cause by erecting Confederate monuments and statues. Also during the 1920s, the first Magruder school was built in York County." I have not found any literature, documents. Is that it?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Lassiter.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Yvonne Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Yvonne Johnson from the Bruton District. I did not attend a segregated school until I was in third grade at Frederick Douglass Elementary on Penniman Road. My mother was very active in the PTA, participating in a variety of fundraising activities to raise money to purchase books and items needed for their children. Instead, all the money they raised to buy books for us went to Magruder and they sent the used books that had been written in, smitten on and had bubble gum on some of them. When the schools integrated, the white parents insisted that the name of Frederick Douglass be changed because they did not want their school, their children to go to a school named after a black man. Yet, black students were forced to go to a school named after a Confederate general. Several articles have been written on the renaming of schools. One, this is a picture from an article on page 47 of the Daily Press, published August 29th, 1954, showing Magruder Elementary School and referencing a two-year bond issued to add six additional rooms to accommodate 317 additional elementary students. It also states that it's located just south of Williamsburg on Route 168 and was named for a Confederate general. 67 years later, the article that Mary mentioned on March 1st, 2011, What's in a Name?, Magruder came from this, this article stated that Magruder came from the name of a Civil War Confederate general, John Bankhead Magruder, who defended the area against the Union's Peninsula Campaign and went on to talk about him becoming such a revered legend in the county that a whole community was named after him. After the Civil War, nearly 200 families settled there, mostly African Americans. In 1942, those families were displaced and forced to move to make way for Camp Perry for World War II. That same article also quoted Brett Hickenbackman as stating that Magruder Elementary School was named as a tribute to the fortitude of the Magruder community. I ask you why? If white parents did not want their, their school, their children to go to a school named after a black man, why would they want them to go to a school named in honor of a community that was for black, of black lost community? We are on the brink of the 250th anniversary of our nation. My fifth great-grandfather was a free man who fought in the Revolutionary War and the Wagoneer, as a Wagoneer. Make no mistake, the name Magruder does not, has not and will never pay tribute to the lost community of Magruder. His descendants should not have to attend a school named in the Jim Crow era to honor a Confederate general who was a traitor to the United States of America that wanted to keep them enslaved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tammy Dearberger.
Good evening and happy Thanksgiving, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Shandor. Excuse me, I'm a homeowner in District Two. I would like to speak to the Policy A Foundations and Basic Commitments this evening, specifically adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the nondiscrimination policy. It is listed on the agenda as the second reading tonight. First off, I do have a question. I would like to know why the proposed language changes are, excuse me, are not attached in the online version of tonight's agenda, nor was it attached in the online agenda for the Monday, November work session. For parents and citizens that did not see the agenda from the October work session or regular board meeting, they are unable to see the proposed changes. The current policy reads, "The school board is committed to nondiscrimination with regard to sex, gender, race, color, ethnic or national origin, disability, religion, ancestry, age, marital status, genetic information or any other characteristic protected by law. This commitment prevails in all of its policies and practices concerning staff, students, educational programs and services and individuals and entities with whom the board does business." As you can see, discrimination based on sex and gender are already covered in this policy. The school attorney has referred to these additions as protected classes. This is unnecessary since all students are currently covered in the, in the nondiscrimination policy. Board, I'm asking you to not create protected classes by the term sexual orientation and gender identity into school code. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody who did not sign up to speak that would like to speak at this time? I now close the public forum on, excuse me. Yeah. On goals and objectives for the fiscal year 2026 capital improvement programs and operating budget. And we will move forward with our agenda and public comment as well. All right. All right, we are now at this time going to go into matters by board members.
Actually, I'm going to, we have the public forum next. So I'm going to have Mr. Bowen come up. I apologize. So we have no one signed up to speak?
We don't have anybody sign up to speak on that.
Okay. Mr. Bowen, well, Mr. Bowen could at least share with the community the purpose of the forum.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor.
Sure. Madam Chair, members of the board, the public forum this evening provides an important opportunity for the, for the members of this community to provide their input in the development of our FY '26 through '31 capital improvements program and also our FY '26 operating budget. These, in preparing these two documents, staff will be working to prioritize more than $250 million to address the needs of our students, our staff, families and our facilities. So, of course, we invite everybody to participate. And if you're not here tonight attending to participate, then we ask that you use our Let's Talk platform, which is accessible on our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Now we'll move into matters by board members. I'm just going to go down the line. We'll start with Mr. Schaefer and he can tell us about any matters that he has.
All right. Thank you. I was very privileged to be able to attend the VSBA convention last week. And it was, it was a great time. And the last speaker on the last day really hit a nerve with me because she was a product of generational poverty. And she had escaped generational poverty and she's told how she did it. And now she's writing books and she's a doctor. I mean, she's got her doctorate and everything. And when she dropped out of high school, she couldn't, she could barely read. And I think she got her GED at 26. And by the time she was 36, she had her doctorate. So she definitely had it. But she said that what changes generational poverty is when students come in contact with a teacher that connects with them. And when that teacher connects with them, it gives them a lifelong yearning to, to learn. And she said that we can, you're never going to get rid of poverty in the, in the country. However, you can break the cycle of generational poverty by teachers connecting with kids to bring them out because we have enough resources in our schools and in our programs and everything to help the kids. I mean, she was saying things like, parents wouldn't come to parent-teacher conferences because they didn't know anything about school themselves. They couldn't relate to math and English and reading because they could barely read, if they could. I mean, she said to this day, her siblings, she's got five, they still sign with an X because they can't write. And this is America in 2024. Okay, it's not like it was, you know, years and years ago. So that was, that was very motivational. And, and I think of the teachers that we have in York County and how many times they connect with their students to be able to, to help them get off the track that they're on. And, and it's just, it's just so special. I feel so good about where we are as a, as a school district, school division as far as how we're helping kids. Then today, I get to have breakfast with Doug Holroyd, the District One Supervisor up in the Bruton Zone. And we had a good chat. He learned a lot about schools. And I learned some about what the plans are for the Board of Supervisors. But it's, it's always pretty eye-opening to him when I can give him some stats about how the expenditures per pupil in York County, how it stacks up in our region and against a state, that we are the lowest in the region. Okay, as far as the amount per. As far as the amount per pupil that is spent on them. And we are one of the lowest in the state. And his thing was, well, that's because we aren't building any schools. And I said, no, but we're having to maintain schools that the average age is fifty-seven years. And so that's not really easy to do. And he said, yes, and you do, you guys do a great job at that. And, and it's true, our schools are in great shape. Also, went to all my schools today. In fact, I saw two of my students that were here tonight walking halls at Bruton, which was pretty neat, and had a great time. I mean, it's, it's a great time anytime I can go to schools. But I would like to put in a plug for SOA, just like I do pretty much every month. December fifth is a swing dance, and this is the first time we've had the swing dance in December. And so it's gonna be Christmas-themed this year. All right, so it's, it's gonna be a great time. And I'd implore everyone to go to Bruton in the main auditorium on December fifth. And then December tenth, we have the Queens Lake Middle School Band Concert, which band is near and dear to my heart. And then December twelfth is the BHS concert. But I'd like to just say, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Hope that you get to spend some good time with friends and family. Eat some turkey, all that good stuff. But just enjoy the, the long days ahead there until we gotta be back on Monday.
Well, and I will say that you've talked so much about this swing dance that I have it on my calendar, and I will be there. All right, Mr. Pyvich, how about you tell us about your board matters?
Madam Chair, thank you very much for the opportunity. I would like to share some of the things that I have done over the last thirty days. As I mentioned earlier, we had the joint meeting with the York County Supervisors. On November first, along with all my fellow members, we attended the Bethel Manor Elementary Blue Ribbon Ceremony, which was so good, encouraging and positive to see that many kids in one place cheerful for a great cause. I would like to congratulate the staff and entire York County School District for being amazing military community for, for our students, for our parents, for our military. So it's just been an honor to be there that day. On November fourteenth, I, as I mentioned, was attending mock-up interviews. I interviewed about five students, and great experience, in my opinion. Just facing those students for the first time, they never sat in front of somebody and having a job interview. For me, it was something that I do almost daily, weekly. But for them, it was so intimidating. And just being able to give them that little feedback that they paid attention, the way that they dressed, the way they talked, eye contact. It just sparked in their eye confidence that whenever they finish and they move on in the world, they will be able to handle it and handle it professionally. So I was very proud and happy to be part of that. Next, same day, November fourteenth, Grafton High School, prepared Grafton Zone Pyramid Concert. Great event. I have never seen that many people in, in a school, actually, auditorium. We had hundred-and-seventy-five students from elementary, middle, and high school onstage at one time. They all had their segments, but on one, it was just unbelievable. Like, trying to take the picture of that, it was, I, I, I think there is somewhere out there. But I wanna say special thanks to Ms. Jared and Mr. Williams for putting that program together and all of the elementary teachers who brought their students and put wonderful, wonderful, entertaining that evening. Next, also, as Mr. Schaefer referred, I attended V S B A Conference on November twentieth and twenty-first. Part of classes that I took, it was about protocols for, actually, excuse me, for the, to boost accountability. And part of that class, me and Dr. Carroll, we attended on it. It was just eye-opening, there was a, kind of presented to us. And for me, new information, but for Mr. Carroll, Dr. Carroll, it was already known facts. And I was very surprised to learn about protocol for reviewing logic, logic models. And it's used to assess the current status of funded projects and determine their health, whether they are dead, unhealthy, or thriving. And those reviews were guiding decisions on whether to cut, revive, or to grow, grow or replicate the projects. One of the matrices that I was like, wow, I need that one for my organization, it was the Complex Change Management Matrix. It's a great tool, little reminder of how can we assess opportunities and where the clogs are within our organization, within certain projects and programs that we can actually assess and do something about it to make it successful or repurpose those funds for something else that is more productive. So that was one of the classes. The next one that I went to, it was the Where to Get Money for Your School Division. It's, it's a fun, very eye-opening session. I learned a lot about the J-Larke Study, that we as Virginia are, as we know, our teachers know, our staff knows, administration, that we are underfunded. And Mr. Bowman, he's already, he's trying, and we are all trying to get more funds. But what was really devastating to me to find out that Virginia actually is below national average funding per student fourteen percent, which equates about nineteen-hundred dollars per student. If we put all of our students together, that, it comes to almost twenty-four million, if my math is correct, twenty-four-point-seven million of funding that we are not getting because of the certain policies and models that are in place. What I learned through the J-Larke Study, they have recommendations how and what we should be doing to get more funding from the state. And we came up with a proposal to work with our local elected officials and advocate for that at Virginia Enrichment, that according to the recommendation one, which addressed the technical issues with the SOQ formula, York County can actually gain five-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in additional fundings. If we were to focus on a recommendation four, which is discontinued Great Recession Air Cost Reduction Measures, we can actually get eight-point-five million dollars in funding, additional funding. And if we were to go to the recommendation number six, which was calculate privileging costs using division average rather than L W A. I don't know what L W A means, but it's, you might. We could gain almost three-point-one million in additional funding. But if we were to get all those three, Virginia, like Y C S, Y C S D could get twelve-point-one million additional funding just based on the current formula and what we're doing. There is a subcommittee, joint subcommittee that was put by the government, and they have the meetings. Next one, it's coming up on December ninth at one o'clock. And they're gonna be addressing and actually looking into the recommendations on the, on one of these recommendations, like number one, four, six, seven, eight through ten, eleven. So anybody interested in, in public, you can join that meeting. It's open to the public, and it's online. So I, I'm gonna attend to do those things. I'm looking actually for the possibilities to discuss with my board members, I mean, fellow board members, about putting a committee or taking a charge on something like this that we as a board can advocate enrichment to help us out with the school funding to get more for our students and for, for our schools. I think with that being said, I conclude mine also. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Thank you for being here with us. Let's enjoy.
Thank you.
Can I give one more shout-out?
Yes, please.
Okay. Friday at the V S B A Convention, we did, we were entertained by the Grafton Jazz Band. And they played, and they were fantastic. So this will probably be the first time that you ever hear me say this, but Friday was definitely a good day to be a Clipper. Yes.
Okay, well, I'm glad you like all that matrix and calculations and numbers because that is definitely not my forte. We all have our, our areas of strength up here. That one is not mine. So I will, this is really, field hockey has been a topic because on October thirty-first, after the last board beating, I had the opportunity to go and see the York Middle School play Grafton Middle School. And York Middle School won the championship game. So that was really exciting to see them win. So we've had wins at the middle school level. And then, of course, tonight you saw all the accolades from Tab High School. I also had the honor of attending the Bethel Manor Elementary School Blue Ribbon Ceremony. I got to give a short speech there, and it was just wonderful. Achieving blue ribbon status is not easy. And so that is really something as a community to be proud of. I also was, this was a first for me this year. I got to attend the English Learner Night at Grafton Middle School. I got to see how our school division does an amazing job connecting our E S O L families to resources in the school division and the community. It was very well-attended. I mean, very well-attended. I was really blown away by the number of people there and the gratitude from these people for us putting together this event. It was just, they did a phenomenal job, and people were very appreciative. So to round out this month, I also attended the V S B A Conference. My track was a little more, I was focused more on the kind of the leadership and teaming. So I took a pre-conference workshop and then some other workshops to tag on to that. So one that was really interesting, it was called Lessons from the Rhino. And I learned that, I didn't know this, a rhinoceros has a two-inch thick skin, hence the name Lessons from the Rhino. So the, the overall theme in there is, you know, have a thick skin. If you're gonna be on a board, you need to have a thick skin. And just talking about some of the challenges really today that boards face across the country. And really, to do the job and do it successfully, everybody's gotta work together and remember why you're here, right? Why do we do this job? We're here for the students. Really, they're my customers. They're my number-one customers is the students and doing right by them. And if you keep focused on that goal, you can really avert a lot of the other unnecessary junk that comes up. I was just amazed. So when you go to conferences, it's nice because you meet other people from other places, and you can, you can align and go, oh, yeah, I'm struggling with that, too. So there's sort of camaraderie. But you can also listen to some of the stories and go, wow, we look pretty good because we're not dealing with that. I was told a story by the presenter, shared a story about a school board. I guess somewhere in a different, I'll even say, just, I want me in the state, just a different state. And they have like seven different lawsuits going among board members. And I thought, wow, what a travesty. When you add all that up in dollars with that cost and who does it really affect and cost, the students? So it was good. A lot of, a lot of insight gained from it. And, you know, I, I look forward to kind of moving forward on this board. I think we're doing good things, and we'll continue and hopefully do great things. I do want, Mr. Richardson was not able to be here tonight. And I did want, I told him I would let everybody know that he also sends his congratulations to the field hockey team as well for Tab achieving such great honor. And on behalf of him and myself, we wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. We hope that you get rest, time with family, friends, more rest, and come back refreshed on Monday. That's the home stretch until we can go back out for holiday break. Okay, at this time, I got to turn this over to Mr. Schaefer for financial matters.
Everybody's favorite part of the meeting. We're gonna cover financial matters. These are consideration of approval of claims certified for payment. Significant expenditures for October instructional-related was A M N Healthcare for thirty-nine thousand dollars for contracted speech services. Beautiful Mind Speech Therapy, twenty-five thousand dollars for speech services. We had thirty-eight thousand five hundred for Discovery Ed subscription renewal. Had a IXL Learning was a hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars for IXL K-three-twelve subscription renewal. Let's see, we also had New Horizons Regional Education Center for a hundred-and-twenty-six thousand for tuition for governor, school, career, and tech ed, and special education programs. Also had Old Dominion Research for eighty-one thousand one hundred for work on the Defense, Department of Defense Maritime Grant. Let's see, we had S H I Varsity, a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand for Children's Service Act Student Tuition, which we have to do. The Faison Center for sixty-three thousand dollars for Children's Services Act Student Tuition. Payments for technology-related totaled approximately two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy dollars. And that was Cox Communications for twenty-thousand four-hundred-and-seventy for internet services. E-plus Technologies, thirty-seven thousand for V M's wear support. And the bulk of it was Schick Communications, two-hundred thousand nine hundred for the replacement of the Valcom systems at Tab High and Waller Mill. All right, moving on, the school nutrition expenditures totaled seventy, seven-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, six hundred dollars and included payments to Alto Hartley, two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars for the replacement of cafeteria equipment, and Sedexo, five-hundred-and-forty-six thousand for food service operations. Payments related to construction and maintenance projects totaled approximately one-point-nine million, including Centennial Contractors, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand five hundred for the locker room renovations at York and Tab High and Tab Middle. Harbor Mechanical, two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand dollars for H V A C work at Tab Middle. Heartland Construction was three-hundred-and-eighty thousand for Seaford Elementary. Mid-Atlantic Installers for three-hundred-and-two thousand for the replacement of the fire and security system at Tab Middle, Mount Vernon, and Waller Mill Trailer. Had the mobile east for the My Dealers was four-hundred-and-nine thousand for the six-pod classroom at Waller Mill. And let's see, ninety-two thousand, ninety-hundred dollars for Bruton High Roof Replacement to Simpson Unlimited. And then we had Z B Z Associates, a hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand dollars for H V A C replacement at Waller Mill, I mean, at Mount Vernon Elementary, sorry. Payments for operations totaled two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And the big one there was utility services from Dominion for two-hundred-and-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. And I think Tab High was about two-hundred-and-four thousand of that. Payments for transportation totaled four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand to Kingmore Supply for four seventy-seven passenger buses and installation of A C units for six buses. Let's see, let's see, significant changes relating to the operation, operating budget for October revenues. State revenue is approximately four-point-one million higher in October twenty-five than October twenty-four due to a decrease in the local composite index. Increases in enrollment and increase in at-risk funding. Federal revenue is approximately two, two-point-three million less in fiscal year twenty-five due to the expiration of the E S R funds stimulus grants. For expenditures, expenditures for operations are approximately two million higher in October of twenty-twenty-five when compared to twenty-twenty-four due to the five-point-five percent increase in salaries, increase in health premiums, and additional positions added in fiscal year twenty-five. Significant changes relating to the school nutrition budget was local revenues is fifty-nine thousand higher in twenty-five due to an increase in meals served. Federal revenue is two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars less in twenty-five due to the loss of one-time federal funding and due to the timing in which federal funds are reimbursed to the school division. There's, there are no significant changes in expenditures for nutrition. Resolution, consideration, let's see, consideration for approval of Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-four. Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-four requires a school board's approval authorizing procurement of more than fifty thousand dollars. Though there are eight items on the resolution totaling one-point-nine-one million, the details of which can be viewed on board docs. Madam Chair, I now move to approve financial matters as listed.
Second.
Are there any discussions or questions? Okay, Ms. Gray?
A motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and Secretary.
A motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to approve Financial Matters as listed. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Okay, I'm going to go over the consent calendar. We have an approval of personnel actions, approval of minutes for a regular meeting on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, and a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors on October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, approval of pay plan updates, approval of proposed changes to program studies, approval of student activity and overnight field trip for the Mount Vernon Elementary School First Lego League to compete in the Virginia Lego League statewide competition, December sixth through seventh, twenty twenty-four, at James Madison University. Approval of consent calendar as listed. I'd like to have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as listed.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent calendar as you listed.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Ms. Gray.
A motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to approve the consent calendar as listed. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passes three to zero.
Okay, we have an action item, consideration of approval of Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-five, a resolution of the County School Board of York County, Virginia, to approve the transfer of two point five million from the Revenue Stabilization Reserve Fund to the School Division's Capital Projects Fund, and request that the County Board of Supervisors to approve the same. Dr. Shandor, any comments?
Excuse me, yes, thanks, Ms. Goodwin. We have talked to board members about this for two or three months, so we're happy to bring you the resolution this evening, and I have Mr. Bowen, who's going to share information or respond to any questions as well.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Madam Chair, members of the board. Resolution twenty-four seventy-five is governed by an agreement between the school board and the Board of Supervisors, which requires approval from both boards to use the Revenue Stabilization Fund. In fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the school division received four point three million dollars in excess impact aid revenue over what was budgeted, and that budget was eight point seven million dollars. So when we add that to the current balance, to the Revenue Stabilization Fund, that fund balance now sits at approximately twelve point four million dollars. So this is the highest that it's been in my tenure, so I can assure you that this is a healthy fund, and utilizing two and a half million dollars of this fund is more than appropriate. And the use of those funds, if approved this evening, would be used for the renovations of the auditoriums at Bruton High, Tab High, York High, and Yorktown Middle School. And if approved, the resolution will then be forwarded to the County Board of Supervisors for their consideration at their December third meeting. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
All right, at this time, I need a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-five, a resolution of the County School Board of York County, Virginia, to approve the transfer of two point five million from the Revenue Stabilization Reserve Fund to the School Division's Capital Projects Fund, and request the County Board of Supervisors to approve the same.
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four dash seventy-five, a resolution of the County School Board of York County, Virginia, to approve the transfer of two point five million from the Revenue Stabilization Reserve Fund to School Division's Capital Projects Fund, and request the County Board of Supervisors to approve the same.
I'll second.
Any questions? Okay, Ms. Gray.
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the resolution as stated. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passes three to zero.
All right. We have no policy discussion, we have no policy first reading. There is a policy second reading action, however, board members, I would like to make a motion to move this to unfinished business at our next work session slash board meeting as we have a couple board members that aren't present tonight, but also, I know myself, and I think Mr. Pyavich, we are just not in a position yet to make a ruling or vote on that yet.
I'd like some input.
Yes. So if I could get a motion and a second? A second?
You made the motion.
I made the motion, you made the second.
He seconded.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, can I get some clarification?
Yes.
Is this for B D D and the A policies, or just the A?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is, yes, thank you. This is for the Policy A, not, not the, this is Policy A Foundations and Basic Commitments, not for B D D or J F C F. It's just for Policy A, so I should have, I should have stated that in, when I made that motion, and I apologize. Did you get all that, Ms. Gray? Okay, go ahead.
A motion was made by Mrs. Goodwin and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to move the second reading of revisions to Policy A to unfinished business for the December ninth meeting. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passes three to zero.
Okay. The next is Policy B D D, this is electronic participation at meetings from, from remote locations. Dr. Shandor, do you have any remarks?
I don't, there are no, there have been no changes since the last reading.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, can I get a motion and a second to approve Policy B D D, electronic participation at meetings from remote locations?
I would like to make a motion for approval of the revision of Policy B D D, electronics participation in meetings from remote locations.
And I'll second.
Seeing we have no questions or comments, I'll go to Ms. Gray.
A motion was made by Mr. Pyavich and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve revisions to Policy B D D. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Okay. And next, we have Policy J F C F, Student Cell Phone and Personal Communication Device Usage. Is there anything to share, Dr. Shandor?
There have been no changes since the last reading, but I did want to acknowledge Dr. Carroll, and he had a committee of parents and families that came in and gave him a lot of feedback. Our principals did a lot of work on this policy, he met with students at Bruton, students at Tab High School, so just appreciate his work leading this committee.
And today, when I went through the schools, I purposely asked for any feedback from the classes at Bruton, especially on the cell phone policy, and I only had one class that gave me questions, and, and it wasn't, it wasn't, they asked if I was going to vote no, and I said, no, I said, it came down from the governor, and it's, yeah, I said, it came down from the governor, and it's, it's by force of law, so we kind of like have to do it.
Okay. So can we get a motion?
Oh, yeah. I make a motion that we approve Policy J F C F, the Student Cell Phone and Personal Communication Device Usage.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay, Ms. Gray.
A motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to approve Policy J F C F as stated. Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passes three to zero.
And now we will have the report from the superintendent. I will now turn it over to Dr. Shandor for his report.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Just really quickly, extremely grateful to work in the school division, I'm thankful for all of our staff members and family who support all of our kids, want to wish everyone a restful Thanksgiving break. I was going to stop there, but I can't help myself, so I do need to share just, just a few quick things. Want to thank Darren Kirsch and Eric Musso White, they are our band leaders over at Grafton High School for the jazz ensemble that performed at V S B A on Friday morning. They were lights-out, amazing. Many superintendents were blown away, and other board members across the state, so it was really showcase that program there. And Ms. Patterson from V S B A actually sent me a separate message thanking me, because the kids were just, they were so, so talented, so we appreciate all the work that they do over at Grafton. Again, congratulating Tab High School's field hockey state championship, they're ninety and oh, which is just unbelievable. Congratulations again to Coach Wilson and all of the athletes. Also, I spent some time, as Mr. Pyavich mentioned, at Grafton High School during mock interviews, and at Bruton High School during mock interviews. What a just amazing experience to sit down and, and talk to young people and help them for their first interview. A lot of them are really nervous, and, you know, so it's a really, it's a really good learning experience for, for our kids. Also, wanted to acknowledge Ms. Goff, who's in the back of the room. She and I presented to our first class session, so working with, bringing our community members in to help, help them further understand some of the work that we do. So our first session was on strategic planning, we spent a good two and a half hours diving into how we develop the plan, how we implement the plan, and how we monitor the plan. So really good feedback from the group that was there, looking forward to the next session. Mr. Bowen will have a lot to live up to January twenty-third, when he presents some of the budget information to this class group, so I know he's excited about that. But anyway, this concludes the superintendent's report, have a wonderful and restful Thanksgiving.
All right. Okay, we are now in need of a closed session. Can I please have a board member make a motion to take us into closed session?
Got you. I move that York County School Board convene in closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for the discussion, discussion and consideration of personnel matters relating to the resignation through retirement of these, of three specific employees. As the matters addressed in closed session are confidential, no minutes or recordings are permitted.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gray.
A motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Pyavich to approve the York County School Board to meet in closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters relating to the resignation through retirement of three specific employees. Mr. Pyavich?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. Goodwin?
Yes.
The motion passes three to zero. We are now in closed session.
Thank you for your participation and input this evening. As a reminder, our next work session, a regular meeting, will be held at York Hall on Monday, December ninth. Our work session will begin at four thirty, and our regular meeting at seven P M. We are now in closed session.